Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. Today is September 5th and we're very glad you're here to join us tonight. We'll begin this evening with an invocation by the Reverend Dr. Michael Walton of Liberty Community Christian Church, also known as LC3.
Thank you for that warm introduction, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Board of Aldermen, City officials, and administration to my fellow Kernersvilleans. I'm always honored I greet you this evening. Let us pray. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Scripture tells us that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of town officials, and for the assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Father, I pray for the agenda set before us today. There is safety in the multitude of council, so we ask that you grant us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, so the outcomes will benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved town of Kernersville. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the-
(Inaudible)
Thank you, you may be seated. Well, it's been a good day in Kernersville. We celebrated the opening of the Greenway. The project was completed August 30th and many individuals in Kernersville have already enjoyed walking on it, riding bikes on it, walking their dogs. It has a parking area at O'Kerr Street and then pedestrian access at Southern Street and at Kilburn Way. Later on the agenda tonight is prohibition proposed for parking on a portion of Kilburn Way Lane. And if you go out there, you'll see that somebody, the house on the end, their driveway is right at the dead end there. And we do want people to be respectful of their access to their property and not park illegally in that location, blocking their access to their home. But it's a nice project, took several years to design and build. It's completed and it's open for use. It's 1.2 miles. There is a trail map that you can see in various points. If you don't want to walk the full length of it, that you can kind of turn around and know, you know, how far you want to walk on it. In the future, we're hopeful there will be benches and other projects that enhance the Greenway, but it's a nice project and would like to thank the Public Services Project, Public Services Department for their hard work on it, the contractors that we had involved in the process. Town employee Scott Willis was recognized for his contributions with the naming of the trail after him and his memory with his family there at the celebration today, and many, many citizens who were involved in various pedestrian and sidewalk and bicycle committees that helped analyze the needs of the town and develop plans that would lead to many good things that have happened for pedestrian improvements in Kernersville, including the Greenway opening today. So, a lot of effort by a lot of people, but a really good result, so I encourage everyone in Kernersville to take a walk or take a bike and enjoy the Greenway. So we'll begin with our public hearings. If an item is denoted as a public hearing, person's attending shall be permitted to address the Board of Aldermen regarding the item under consideration. Those speaking in favor speaking first and those against speaking second. Proponents and opponents each have 20 minutes of time to speak. May allow one speaker to utilize that time or choose to allocate the time amongst different speakers. In the event that either proponents or opponents have not designated a speaker, speakers to represent their views, the mayor shall divide the 20 minutes by the number of speakers wishing to address the board, and each speaker shall be allowed that given time to express their ideas and desires. After the opponents speak, the mayor will allow the proponents five minutes for rebuttal. If proponents choose to exercise this option, the opponents also have five minutes for rebuttal. In the event the proponents do not present a rebuttal, the opponents shall be given no further time to speak. Item 1A is public hearing on an annexation. I'll recognize Kathryn Garner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This annexation has been noticed to adjacent municipalities that we have annexation agreements with. However, it has gotten slated for your agenda just slightly ahead of its associated rezoning case, and so staff would recommend a continuance to the October 3rd meeting to track with its rezoning. It'll go to Planning Board next Monday and then be on your October agenda.
Okay. Do I have a motion to continue this matter till our regular meeting on October 3rd?
So moved.
Got a motion by Alderman Thompson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham. All in favor? It's unanimous. All right. Item 1B is a public hearing on a rezoning. Jason Grubbs, agent for Grayson Klein Properties LLC owner, for a single-phase conditional use rezoning, zoning docket K626A1. We'll begin with a presentation by our community development director Kathryn Garner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This case is an expansion of a previous rezoning, so that's the 626 Amendment 1. Petitioner is Jason Grubbs, agent for owner, and the owner is Grayson Klein Properties LLC. The proposed zoning is for the, for the site is from limited industrial special use district and residential multifamily 18 to all limited industrial conditional use as a single-phase rezoning. Proposed use is wholesale trade and the entire site is just over three acres. This property is located at the end of Berry Garden Road. You can see it highlighted here in blue. The existing structure on the site is 13,392 square feet, and the proposed warehouse structure addition is 10,500 square feet, and it's to be located on the front here in the portion that's been zoned RM18, hence the request to rezone to all limited industrial conditional. This is the site plan that has been submitted with this conditional application showing the existing structure and the new proposed warehouse in relation to that existing structure. Since this one has been developed and does have a building on the ground, some of the conditions that staff has recommended are to bring the new building into conformance with the previous approval and the existing building. So there's brick required as well as additional landscaping to, for the residential properties to the west. This is the street view of the entrance there at the end of Berry Garden Road. So it's, it is accessed off its own driveway. There's no interconnectivity to any of the other residential properties once you reach the end of Berry Garden Road, and then the star denotes where that existing, or the new proposed structure will go in front of the existing structure. You can see that it does have brick on this parking lot side on the front. These are the building elevations that were provided by the applicant. Staff and Planning Board's recommendation is to move to amend the unified development ordinance by rezoning the property in case K626A1 from limited industrial S and RM18 to limited industrial conditional single phase for the entirety of PIN 6886946827, finding that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Kernersville Development Plan and being both reasonable and in the public interest because of the following. The proposed rezoning, development, and use are consistent with the town of Kernersville's UDO and land use plan. The proposed warehouse expansion will provide a 40-foot buffer yard abutting the residential properties as well as a partial landscape berm on the east and west perimeters. The building elevation will incorporate brick on each wall of the new structure, and the existing gravel parking lot will be improved to be solid surface. And so Planning Board and staff also recommend approval of the site plan with the conditions listed in the staff report. This was heard back in May at the Planning Board meeting, and these, this was the vote of all of those members who were present with six for, one against, and three absent.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open. I have signed up to speak, Jason Grubbs, Trip Myrick, Ravendhir Bishram, and Christopher Klein, all in favor. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Can you fill out a card for me so I can call your name? They're in the back. And Mr. Grubbs, as you know, we have strict time limits, so how long would you like to speak?
May I have the first?
Sure.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna try my best to keep my remarks to about 10 minutes, and then I believe Mr. Myrick and Mr. Bishram are gonna take probably about five minutes to address some of the more technical aspects of our petition, and that should leave around four to five minutes for us to, I may come back up, fill in a few more gaps, or if there are questions, we'll certainly be happy to answer those.
So there's two ways we can do it. We can either call time on you at 10 minutes for your next speaker, or the clock can count down and we'll give you a time at, or a warning at two minutes to go.
You are welcome to call time on me at 10 minutes. That might not be a bad idea for me.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Well, hang on a minute. If you can sit back down for just a moment. If you can bring forward that card. Okay, so how it'll work is we'll first hear from everyone in favor, and I'll call out their names, and then we'll hear from everyone opposed, and I'll call you at that point. And so the same, you have up to 20 minutes to speak, okay? And then is there anyone else in opposition? If someone else comes before the opposition will need, and wants to speak, we'll have to give them some of the time too, though. Right? Okay. We've got the staff report, opened the public hearing. Mr. Grubbs, I'll recognize you at this point.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the board. My name's Jason Grubbs. I'm an attorney with Coltrane Grubbs, 109 East Mountain Street, Suite C, Kernersville, 27284. I am the attorney for Grayson Klein Properties, who's the petitioner in this matter. With me tonight, I've got Mr. Christopher Klein, who is the member manager of Grayson Klein Properties. He's also the president of Casey Aquatic Enterprises, which does business here in Kernersville's Carolina Aquatics. Also with me tonight is Mr. Trip Myrick, who is the vice president of construction for Myrick Construction, who's the general contractor. And Kathryn, if we could go to the next slide, I'm sorry. And then also Mr. Rav Bishram, who is the engineer with FEI Consultants, who did our engineering work in site plan. Thank you very much for having us tonight. We're looking forward to talking with you. I'm particularly excited to talk with you about this case, because I think it's probably gonna be one of the more unique cases, certainly that I've had the opportunity to talk with you about, but probably that you've heard for a variety of factors. If we could go to the next slide, please. One of those reasons is that the petitioner is fairly unique. Grayson Klein Properties is a real estate holding company that owns the property where Carolina Aquatics operates, and Carolina Aquatics is sort of a hidden gem in Kernersville for a lot of reasons. One, as you'll see, they're kind of tucked away in a spot that not many people know they're there, and the other reason is that they do something that is a pretty unique business, and their customers really aren't necessarily here in Kernersville. So they're a family-owned small business, they're a wholesaler of aquatic livestock, coral, invertebrates, and other aquarium supplies. They actually have their own coral propagation farm. It's one of the largest on the East Coast, and they supply all kinds of aquarium goods on a wholesale basis, and that's important to keep in mind throughout the country. So they're wholesale only, they don't have any walk-in retail customers. Most things are ordered online and either shipped or delivered by Carolina Aquatics, but there's not any retail traffic at all coming in or out. We can go to the next slide, please. But they're growing more than just coral over at Carolina Aquatics. They're actually growing a pretty substantial business that has really taken off in the last 10 or 15 years. 28 employees, some have been recruited from all over the country. They're one of the largest aquatics wholesalers on the East Coast, and they've been some of the first importers of rare and newly discovered fish and other aquarium items. They've got three warehouses right now. One is at their current site on Berry Garden Road, two are off-site, and that's part of the reason we're here to speak with you this evening. We can go to the next slide. This just shows you, and it's not a great color-wise, contrast-wise picture, far northeastern Kernersville, off of Berry Garden Road. If we go to the next slide, maybe it'll be a little easier to see. Property is kind of in the center. It's bounded on the east by Mason Grove Road, to the north by North Main Street, Grayland Street's kind of to the west, and then East Mountain is sort of the south. So, we can skip the next slide and go to the one after that. There we go. So this is, the next reason this is unique, besides a unique business being located there, is it's a single-tax parcel that is partially in the town of Kernersville, partially not in the town of Kernersville, partially zoned limited industrial and partially zoned multifamily. So one of the conditions that you'll hear about later on is that the entire parcel be annexed, so that'll, that'll come in a subsequent hearing if we're, if we're lucky enough to be approved this evening. But the idea is to get all of the zoning for the entire parcel zoned limited industrial conditional use. We can go to the next slide, it's just a view from the other end. Kathryn showed you a picture from the beginning end of Berry Garden. This is where Berry Garden is out, into the parking lot. Their current approximately 13,400 feet current facility. We can go to the next slide. So that shows you their existing facility there to the north, to the south is the proposed 10,500-foot addition. And quite honestly, the reason that they're looking to do this addition is because they've just outgrown the space that they have both on-site as well as on their off-site warehouses, and they're spending a lot of time going back and forth in and out to the other warehouses, getting things back to their main location to then get out to their customers, which obviously, as you can imagine, is fairly inefficient. Go to the next slide. They actually operationally think that adding this 10,500-square-foot facility to their 3.1-acre site is going to make them more efficient and reduce traffic. So it's one of those weird things, it's sort of subtraction by addition, I guess, instead of addition by subtraction, by, by adding some space, they're not gonna be going in and out as much, which should help with traffic in and out. We can skip to the next slide and then skip to the following slide, please. So another thing that's unique, it's not often that I stand up here and talk to you about a rezoning where we're not really gonna do anything different at the property other than what's being done now. The existing use is wholesale trade aid, that's not gonna change. It's gonna remain, the way they've done business is gonna continue to be the way they do business, they're just gonna have more room and more space to do that. The land, Kernersville's land use plan calls for this area to be a business support area, which is right in line with how they're currently using it. It's intended to, you know, accommodate warehousing, flex space, light industrial, just like what we're doing here. We can go to the next slide, please. So our proposed zoning is gonna be limited industrial, which under the UDO is really focused on things like manufacturing, wholesaling, warehousing. We don't do any manufacturing there, just mainly wholesaling and warehousing, and generally limited industrial's gonna have little or no adverse effect on adjoining properties. We can go to the next slide, please. So, number four reason why this is a unique, unique business, unique site, unique rezoning case in terms of what's in the county, what's in the town. Fourth reason is it's unique in that this is gonna be an instance where you've got limited industrial adjacent to residential properties, and with some foresight, the UDO addresses situations like that where that residential zoning is within 150 feet of the industrial property. And what it does is it imposes some additional standards, understandably so, because you've got an industrial use adjacent residential use. And those standards really kind of revolve around things like materials, buffer yards, lighting, noise, and then prohibiting some uses that just aren't compatible, even though it's light industrial, they just don't really work next to our residential property. So that's kind of what the UDO says, is hey, when we've got industrial next to residential, we gotta tighten things up a little bit to make sure that it works for both the business user and the residential user. Next slide, please. So our proposed site plan, as we submitted it, as you heard Kathryn say, complies with all of those requirements. We tried to address all of those. Planning staff was fantastic to work with, as they always are. They're always trying to balance competing objectives, and we appreciate their candor and their willingness to, to listen to us. We tried to submit a site plan that fits with those standards in the UDO, but I should point out to you that the UDO does allow a departure in certain cases where the proposed special use addresses adverse impacts caused by the industrial use and fulfills the intent and purposes of the more intense standards better than strictly interpreting those standards. That's gonna be important for something I'm gonna come back to in a moment. We're really concerned with two aspects of that, those sort of increased standards. We can go to the next slide. And the reason there are two is because, as you're gonna hear momentarily, we feel like one of those standards that, for a variety of factors, we're really strongly complying with, sort of offsets the need for one of the other standards, particularly given some unique circumstances surrounding this property. So the standard, first one is building materials. So the bottom 10 feet of all exterior walls in this LI adjacent residential situation are required by the UDO to be brick. Can't use quick brick or some other similar product as a substitute. And then the other big one that impacts this is on the next slide, which is the buffer yard requirements. So in addition to that 10 feet from ground up of brick, you're gonna have a 40-foot wide buffer yard that has to contain a berm that's six feet tall. The crown width has to be at least eight feet, and then it has plantings commensurate with a type IV 30-foot wide buffer yard, which for a 100-foot span is gonna be two deciduous trees, 18 primary evergreen plants, and 10 supplemental shrubs fit into 100-yard stretch. Every 100, I'm sorry, 100-foot stretch. Every 100 feet, you're gonna have that same grouping of plantings, which if you kind of do the math, they're gonna be pretty substantial through there. So, we got buffer yard requirements, we got brick requirements, and I'm gonna step aside and let Mr. Myrick and Mr. Bishram talk a little bit about those as well as some other issues.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good to begin. Jason, thank you for the introduction there and the well-said explanation of what we're trying to accomplish. I've been working with, oh, I should introduce myself. Trip Myrick, Myrick Construction, 737 Almond Road, Bisco, North Carolina. I've been working with Chris Klein for several months now, as we've been working toward a rezoning, as we're here tonight, and toward the construction of this new warehouse facility. One of the things, as Jason has noted, and the main item that I'll speak to tonight is what I've handed out in front of you, and what we're requesting is some grace toward the masonry requirement on some of these walls. The left elevation, which is what we, what you might deem as the front, is what your entering is, so the architectural depictions there have a little different handle to them, but the left elevation is what you'll actually see as you enter Berry Garden Road. And so, as was mentioned earlier, the brick on the front of the existing building, this is where we would see an equal to that, is on the left elevation. Moving away from that, and so we're, we're okay with that one wall and to adhere to what is, what is there now. The rear elevation, as is shown, is the next depiction to the left there, and what the masonry along that road, along the driveway, this is on the left-hand side as you're riding in, you've got a berm, a landscaping buffer, as well as masonry on this same wall that is only seen from that driveway location. And what we're asking for some grace on that side is one or the other, because we believe that the masonry, the masonry will be either covered by the buffer and the landscaping or vice versa. But having both is, is just an expenditure that seems like it's maybe doubling up on what the use, or what the intent is for the buffer itself. Moving down to the front elevation. So the front elevation is what you, I've actually got this backwards, I apologize. So, the front elevation is what you see from the drive, the rear elevation's what you're gonna see from Berry, from Floyd Barrier Drive. And from Floyd Barrier Drive, we're sitting at a contour level that is over 10-feet difference between our floor level to the residential areas of Floyd Barrier. And what you're looking at is a line of sight that is well above the masonry wall. So we're asking for some grace on that side. One, we've got the landscape buffers on that end, as well as the contour differences of over 10 feet, I think it's 12 feet, right? And so the line of sight there actually puts you looking at the roof of the building from the Floyd Barrier side more than you are a wall. And then the last depiction shown as the right elevation is the view that you will be seeing as you step out of the front door of the existing building, and that will be the only side that you'll be able to, or the only people that will be able to see that right elevation is the owner himself walking out of the front door of his business. And so, we were asking for grace on the masonry requirement on that side as well, just to assist in the cost of the construction, and the only aesthetics there is that the owner himself seeing. So, I'll take any questions about that in detail and try to my best to explain.
We'll do questions at the end.
I think Mr. Bishram was going to...
Okay, Christopher Klein, then.
I signed everybody up in case they needed to speak.
Would you like to return, then, Mr. Grubbs? Go ahead.
If I may, please. Thank you, Trent, for addressing that technical issue. So as we've noted, the next unique thing here is that we are asking for something a little unusual, which is a change in one of the conditions that the UDO imposes here. If we can go to the next slide, we've got what that could look like. So if you look at your proposed resolution for the ordinance, or the amendment to the ordinance, there in black is condition three under other, and that basically is word-for-word in black, I believe, what it says. And then what we would propose is adding the red underlined portion that says, "The foregoing requirement notwithstanding, requirements of Chapter B, Article 2, Section 2, 1 dot 4A, 4A of the Unified Development Ordinance regarding building materials shall only apply to the front of the structure to be constructed." And by front, since there's a little confusion, we mean the part you're going to see when you come in off of Berry Garden Road, the front of the building being constructed, newly constructed. We can go to the next slide, just to kind of summarize. There are multiple reasons we're asking for this. One would be that these requirements imposed by the UDO really only come into play if you've got LI next to residential, and there's a residential structure within 150 feet. So if all the houses around this were more than 150 feet away, we wouldn't even be talking about this. It's hard to see here, but I did some approximate measurements, starting at the top, 75 feet, 95 feet, 112 feet, 113 feet, 127 feet. So as you can see, we're not right on top of these residential structures. They're at least half as far away as the ordinance sort of contemplates. And for the part that's being constructed, which would be in this area, 113 feet is as close as you get. If we could go to the next slide, please. Next thing is that this is looking from Floyd Barrier Drive over towards my client's existing building and where the property, the new building is going to be constructed. So we're starting at the cul-de-sac on Floyd Barrier, and then going towards where the new building is being constructed. And as you can see, there's a Stub Street, Chakora Lane, gives you the best view. There's some substantial vegetation already in place there. You can't even see my client's building now, with the vegetation that's already there, before we ever build a buffer yard. So that would be our second reason for asking for this, is that there's already some vegetative screening there. Go to the next slide, please. Thirdly, we're going to build a buffer yard that's going to screen off just about anything you could possibly see from the neighboring adjacent structures. Next slide is what Trent was talking with you about, looking from Floyd Barrier Drive, due to the topographic relationship of the houses to the building, they're at a level at which, when you look across, eye level is going to be well above the bottom or the top of the last course of brick. So if you see any brick, it's going to be at the very bottom, if you're looking down like this, instead of looking in line of sight. And that's for someone five foot six. Someone six feet or more, it's going to be even different. We can go to the next slide. And then, really, to Trent's point about the other sides of the building. So we've addressed the front, we're fine putting brick there. We think we've addressed with topography and current vegetation and buffer yard screening the houses on Floyd Barrier. The property to the rear, up here and wraps around, this giant parcel here is owned by Forsyth in Guilford County. This parcel is also owned by Forsyth in Guilford County, and is part of the RM18 zoning. So the likelihood that you're going to have any residential structures in close proximity like you have over here, with two county governments owning a substantial chunk of property there, you may know better than I do what the plan for that is, but I don't think it's to build houses. So the whole purpose of the ordinance is to screen off industrial from residential, the likelihood on the back and the eastern side is, there's never going to be any residential to screen there. So, to summarize, if we can go to the next slide. We got a unique petitioner, a unique site, and a unique request. We want to comply as substantially as we can with the intent and purpose of the UDO, but we feel like, in this case, it may be a situation where the UDO didn't envision a building being built in front of another building owned by the petitioner, where the only person that's going to see the backside of a building is the person that owns the building. This is an existing use that's going to remain unchanged. Part of the property is already zoned LI. It's a unique Kernersville business that's trying to expand and keep doing business in Kernersville. It's an excellent infill opportunity. I hope I'm up here talking with y'all more and more, over the course of my career, about infill development, because it's something that we're going to have to embrace as a community, because we're running out of places to put stuff. And this is an opportunity to use some space that's not going to be used for anything else, but we got to figure out a way to do it in a way that makes sense for everyone. The site plan and construction plans are consistent with the UDO requirement but for our request, which is not reflected in what we submitted, to deviate from those, because we feel like we're fulfilling the intent and purpose. So thank you very much for your time, and we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grubbs. All right. Now I'd like to recognize Sharon Ely.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sharon Ely, and I stay at 354 Floyd Barrier Drive. My home is in the back of the existing building. What he was saying about the changing the brick on the outside to keep in the, I think that should continue, because although I can still hear everything that's over there. And with the trees as another buffer, there aren't enough trees to buffer. And also, I can see, I can, even in the summer, I can still see the building from the back of my home. So those things that they are trying to not do for cost, I feel that they should continue to do for myself and the other residents that will be affected. And yes, it might be a unique business, and that's nice, but still, think about us, and that we have to live there. And although I've gotten used to the noise, it's going to be more noise. And that's about it, because I'm trying not to get emotional, because I already feel that everything is going to go forward. So I'm still going to voice my, how I feel, but I already know everything is already in progress, so, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? Mr. Grubbs, would you like to do a rebuttal?
As to the comments regarding noise, certainly, we want to be sensitive to the neighbors. I think Mr. Klein has got a history of being a good neighbor. I'm not sure adding brick to the outside of the building is going to do that much for the noise. What I do think is going to help with the noise is going to be the six-foot-tall, eight-foot-wide landscape buffer that's going to, you know, run down the property line, that will substantially, I would imagine, dampen noise. The ordinance contemplates that being similar to a sound barrier. In fact, it offers a DOT-compliant sound barrier as an alternative in parts of the ordinance we're talking about. The amount of noise, actually, we anticipate should be reduced, because they're going to be making fewer trips to their other sites to bring items back. So if it's truck noise we're talking about, I would imagine, operationally, that's going to be reduced by this, not increased, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Ely, since he came up to speak again, you have the right to come up and speak again if you'd like to. You may. It's a time limit of five minutes, though, okay? If you could introduce yourself as you begin to speak.
All right, so I'm Mario Ely, live at 354 Floyd Barrier. So the barrier that's there now, I'll say, yes, it's fine during the summer months, but of course, when the foliage falls off, you can see everything back there. During the previous time when the first building was being built, there was supposed to be that same barrier that was put there. It was put there, but it was never maintained, so it didn't really grow in the way that it was intended to. It's not necessarily such a big issue, but I definitely think it should be done, especially for those new people that's living there, that they wanted to come, they didn't know about it. I've been here before, for the, like I said, the previous one, but anyway. So I think that definitely needs to be done. In the previous time, it got done, but it wasn't maintained, so a lot of the trees died. So yes, we do have natural foliage. The biggest noise issue is not necessarily trucks, at least for myself. I can't speak for anybody else in the neighborhood. It would be more so the fan running periodically. I mean, it's not all the time, but when it's on, you definitely hear it. So I don't know what can minimize that noise, but that's just my take on it, and that's all.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone on the Board of Aldermen have questions with anyone in the room?
Madam Mayor, I have a question of Mr. and Ms. Ely.
Okay, pick one.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ely. You had talked about that noise was an issue for you. Yet I understand from Mr. Ely that it may not be so much truck traffic, but the fans. What is the nature of the noise you hear from the fans?
It's like an industrial fan sound, and also the lighting. The lighting shines right into our home. But just like I said, I've gotten used to it. I had no choice. I'm a light sleeper, so my sleep is disturbed, but...
Well, and is it, are the fans for the purpose of air filtration within the building, or is it for purposes of cooling? You don't know?
We'd have to ask them that.
We'd do that, yeah. Okay. I'm just trying to get my ears attuned to what you may be hearing. And the other thing I would make as a comment would be that I hope you don't ever feel like you come in here for a public hearing. I understand why you might tend to believe that it's a done deal, till these hands go up, up here. It's not. So I hope you will always feel like that we listen to your input, that we value your input, and I think the folks up here really try to put ourselves in our residential setting, put ourselves in your shoes as to what you're experiencing. So please don't stop telling us, you know, how you feel about these things, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions, if anyone does? Do you have any questions, Mr. Barrow?
I do. This is the lady that's building the building, Mr. Myrick.
If you'd come forward to the podium.
Y'all are asking not to put the brick around the back of the building, right?
That's right.
That's one of the things you want to do. Okay. And this lady's problem is with the sound mitigation. What can you do to assure us that you're going to build a building that's going to be as good as it can be in terms of sound mitigation? And also, she talked about light pollution, lights shining over into her property. And I know for a fact that there are certain ways you can do your lights to where they don't extend past your property. And I'd like to hear your thoughts on doing that and making it as good as we can make it for these people. What are your thoughts? What can you do? And what can we do to make you do it? That's what I'm saying, all right? Go ahead.
Understood. So some of these may already be handled. I can't speak for the existing building and what it may or may not be doing against their home. For the new building, on a lighting standpoint, that can be handled in the building permit section. Right now, we would only have a minor security lighting around the perimeter of the building. That can be a down lighting, so you could approve it with down lighting only, for instance. And as long as that's in connection to be approved by the electrical code, I wouldn't see an issue with that. From a sound standpoint, there are exhaust fans that are required by building code, and that's something that is hard to get around. And so I can understand that for the existing building, as well as the new, the requirement for the exhaust fan is there, and it's just a building code issue that can't be escaped. On an insulation standpoint, the owner has elected to have a thicker insulation than what is required, and so that is a choice for him, and one that he may or may not would move forward with. But insulation, and the building is insulated either way, whether it's with a R13 or an R19 in the walls, the insulation factor is greater than what he's got in the existing building, and so that should have some sound dampening effect to it. The masonry itself, I don't see an insulation value added to that from a sound standpoint. You can look at that from a building code standpoint, and a brick veneer adds no insulation value from a thermal standpoint, for sure. And so I wouldn't perceive it to be any acoustical value as well, so more than what the wall insulation inside the cavity will already be.
The exhaust fans, where are they located on the building? I don't see them in the pictures there.
They would be shown on the mechanical plans once we get into the building engineering side.
Where would they be?
It's, it would be up to the mechanical engineer, Mr. Barrow. I don't mean to defray from the question, but it would be up to the mechanical engineer to be able to facilitate the best ventilation for that building.
I know before, when we've had people come before us where they had industrial property backing up the residential, that some of the conditions were that they put garage doors and drives and stuff like that on the opposite side of the building. And I'm thinking, why couldn't you do the same thing with the exhaust fans, where it wasn't coming on and this lady hearing it at whatever hour?
Understood. So it depends on the interiors as well, and so the racking of his supplies inside and how that would potentially stop the flow of ventilation versus allow the flow of ventilation. So it's going to be wrapped around what the interior layout is of his racket.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, could you just come back? I just got one question for you. Sorry about that. To the point that the gentleman was making, who, you know, it looks one way right now, because it's summertime and you got all the foliage and whatnot, and then when winter comes, all is going to go away, which makes that the noise is going to increase, the site is going to look different from their perspective and whatnot. What can be done to mitigate that from your perspective?
I think the UDO addresses that. I might defer that question to the planning department, but the UDO requires this 40-foot buffer. And so I think that is an effort to shield and screen an industrial building. Outside of that, it's what we see from place to place, is a landscape buffer for this screening. I wouldn't see a, I don't know of another method, but the planning department may.
You have any suggestions? What can be done to mitigate that from your perspective?
I think the UDO addresses that. I might defer that question to the planning department, but the UDO requires this 40-foot buffer, and so I think that is an effort to shield and screen an industrial building. Outside of that, it is what we see from place to place as a landscape buffer for this screening. I, I wouldn't see a, I don't know of another method, but the planning department may.
You have any suggestions?
The buffer yard is the primary method of screening, and that's why it's gone above and beyond and required the berm and the buffer landscaping, as well as the 40-foot setback. 40-foot setbacks are required for any commercial property adjacent to residential, but that's also the purpose of the brick, is that at least when the landscaping may be a little thinner in the winter, that the view that the neighbors adjacent to the building have is one that's not just a metal building.
Okay, thank you.
Got a follow-up to that. Is there nothing we can do? I guess what, what he was speaking about was the buffer that was put in place on the original building. Do we have anything that we can do to go back to ensure it's being maintained?
Yes, we can do that, and that's something that sometimes we, we need our neighbors to let us know of, so that we know to enforce.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Are we ready to close the public hearing? Okay, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Is there further discussion by the board? Or do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to just ask if we can, it sounds like maybe this downward lighting on the exterior on the new expansion might be something, and I honestly don't know about relative cost of that, but that would seem to me to be a reasonable and not a cost prohibitive accommodation to take care of some of the, and I hesitate to even call it light pollution, but light impact on folks like the Elys has to light. I would hope that we could take a look at that, Catherine, as a, something we could encourage.
If that's added, would it apply only to the new building and not the existing building?
That's right.
Would it, or?
It would depend how you wanted to word the, the motion, but I would think it would be reasonable to have the downward directed fixtures, either full cutoff or semi-cut-off for the new portion, and any parking lot lighting.
That being the case, Madam Mayor, then I'd make a motion that we approve the amended proposal that's before us at this point.
All right, so we need to be very, very specific. So the proposal that's before us, presented by staff, would include the facade requirements that are standard in the UDO, the landscaping requirements and that sort of thing. Am I correct, Ms. Garner? And then, so a lighting condition would need to be very specific, so in that area that, there's probably not a lot of ambient light from streetlights and that sort of thing. What, would you say partial cutoff or full cutoff? I'm not sure the technical difference between those and what would be appropriate to, you know, require.
You could probably just use downward directed fixtures and then state to avoid light pollution onto adjacent properties, and that would give the applicant some latitude in the fixtures that they choose, and then us the ability to enforce the intended outcome, which is preventing pollution onto adjacent properties.
Okay, if you could say that again, so the condition would be to require downward directed fixtures to reduce impacts on adjacent properties?
I would accept that as a condition to the motion that I made, Madam Mayor.
All right, now, would that go under site plan then, or other?
You can just add it to the proposed conditions from staff, and we'll just tuck it in at the bottom.
Okay, so an additional, so you'd like to make the motion for approval as recommended by staff and the planning board with an additional condition, that downward directed fixtures are required to reduce impacts on adjacent properties?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, I, I think that's what we need to do.
Okay, that's the motion, is there a second? And then after, we have a second, we can have discussion.
Second.
Got a second? Mr. Barrow?
I think we should also consider something about the sound and the fans on the back of the building. I asked Mr. Myrick the question, and he, he never did give me a straight answer, other than it depends on what the mechanical people are gonna do with inside the building or whatever. They should design it with no fans on the back of the building. I think that they could, they can make that happen. There's four sides, pick one. Don't put anything on the back. I think that's fair to the neighbors, because that's one thing she complained about was the noise, and I can understand that.
Do you have proposed wording, or would you like staff to propose something?
Well, the staff could propose something, but in terms of having exhaust fans on the back of the building, the exhaust towards the residential area, be minimized as much as possible in terms of my reference, I own.
So we revise in the motion so that we can include that noise? Okay, okay, good, good.
Do you have a more specific wording you'd recommend, Catherine? I think there was concern about the noise of the fans for the original zoning case as well, back several years ago.
I would suggest that any exhaust fans not be located on elevations that front residential property. That way, the contractors and the mechanical engineers have two other options that face internal to their property, that they could design the layout. If the layout and the exhaust are contingent upon each other, then that gives them at least two sides to work on, but would prevent the exhaust fan from being on the residential side, which it sounds is the, your intended outcome.
I like that.
Okay, so any exhaust fans shall not be located on facades that face residential properties to reduce noise impacts on adjacent properties. Does that sound? Keith, have you got that?
Yes.
Catherine, do you have that as a backup? Okay, so there's a proposal to amend the motion made by Alderman Barrow. Do you agree to amend?
I would accept that proposal, too, so amend.
And I will for the second as well.
Okay, all right, are there any other discussion, potential changes?
Ms. Ely, we heard you. We heard you. Thank you.
Do I have a, okay, I've got a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Barrow.
I got a question, I just, this is kind of outside the bounds of what we're doing here, but y'all are down there where Berry Water Gardens is at, what's your relationship to those people? If any? Because when I grew up here in Kernersville, I remember when I was in like the third or fourth grade, they'd take us down to Berry Water Gardens and let us run around down there and, the Fever's. Before that was the Berries and the Fever's, and, and, you know, at one time, I was told that every goldfish sold in any Woolworth in the United States of America was grown right down there at the bottom of the hill in Kernersville.
I've, I've heard the same. Christopher Klon, 118 Heatherwood Drive, Winston-Salem. Yes, they, the, the Berries started it. I'm not exactly sure the relationship with the Fever's, they were the ones that built this, this new warehouse, and they actually lent us the money to start Carolina Aquatics, and we ended up buying them out not, not too long ago. But that's the basic relationship there.
Good deal, y'all got a long history in Kernersville, going back a lot, a lot of years, and we appreciate you being down there, and, and I knew you were down there, I know your attorney said not a lot of people know they're down there, but I knew you were down there. I just didn't know what form you were in then, how you were related to the other people. Thank you very much, and good luck to y'all folks with y'all's expansion.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the public session, we have speakers from the floor. If anyone would like to address the board on an item not otherwise included on the agenda, this is your opportunity. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item B, consideration of an ordinance, amending, amending Traffic Schedule Four of Chapter Nine of the Code of Ordinances to prohibit parking on a portion of Kilburn Way Lane.
Madam Mayor, Board, this is the portion of Kilburn Way Lane where it terminates into the bridge there to start onto the Greenway. It will be from there back to the intersection of Carlisle Park Drive. It's not a great distance, but there is a driveway, a gentleman lives there at the end of Kilburn Way, when you turn left on the Carlisle Park. First house on the right, that driveway comes out right here.
First house on the left.
When you turn on Carlisle Park, he's on the right. If you go down Kilburn Way, it's on the left. So there's a driveway that, that they back out of that comes out into this area, so we'd need to put no parking there so that they can continue to get out of their driveway.
The house faces Carlisle, but the driveway is actually on Kilburn Way, so it's very tied up against where the Greenway is. Okay, any questions? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion to approve by Alderman Pennix, second. Second by Alderman Thompson, all in favor? It's unanimous. Moving on to item C, the road widening project. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor, Board, we discussed this on Wednesday night, we have it back on the agenda. Catherine, if you can pull it up, I think it pulls up. As I was telling you the other night, this is basically to widen Shields Road from the intersection of Shields Road and Union Cross Road, back a distance of about probably 600 feet, maybe 700 feet. You see the two driveways there. It's what this will do is it will put a left turn lane from the furthest driveway, the second one. Left turn lane will be there all the way to the, it'll be a little bit beyond that, a little bit to the east of that, but it will be from there all the way to Shields Road and Union Cross Road. You know, this is required by NC DOT, this is a DOT road. There was some discussion Tuesday night about the town taking over ownership of the road, and maybe not having to do these turn lanes. I can tell you that after Thursday night of last week, we had a small cross-country meet out at Ivy Redmond, about, it took about an hour to get the cars off of Beeson Road on two Shields Road. Probably 90% of those cars went to the left up toward Union Cross Road because they can go up, they either go there and, and eat at Union Cross and 40, or they go to the Derry or one or the other. But Ernie was, Ernie and I were talking, and he said, you know, once the building is open, folks will be coming from both directions to go to the building. We'll have soccer, soccer games getting out of Ivy, we'll have cross-country meets, we'll have lacrosse, everybody converging on that intersection, and without turn lanes there is, is, it will back traffic up, we're afraid, probably to Beeson Road, so nobody will really be able to move. I will tell you that we're recommending doing these turn lanes now, whether we take the road over or not. We've gotten some cost estimates on that, the cheapest way to go, as I told you the other night, it's DOT, their estimate's 818,000. There is a 10% contingency in that of about $70,000, and it may come in cheaper, and so we can come in under date 18. Thus, our recommendation is to do it now. At some point in the future, we may want to take over the road, that future may be very close if we decide to go back and finance this project. Alderman Barrow asked the other night how we would pay for it. Our initial intention will be, we will probably use general fund, fund balance to pay for that. If we see that we're getting close to our percentage that we have to maintain in fund balance, we would go back and, and finance a project, which means we'd take the road over. I will tell you that in all likelihood, somewhere down the road, if we don't do it now, probably five to 10 years down the road, we would assume ownership of that road, mainly so we can put stoplight at Beeson Road and Shields Road. DOT does not allow that right now because it's too close to the one at Union Cross and Shields. But we do anticipate needing one there, there's some other things that we may want to do to the road as well. So at some point in the future, we would take it over, if not now, to finance it, but either way, we recommend this, just to move traffic up and down that road. It would have been required by DOT. There was some, some mix-up when the plans were sent to them. DOT gave their opinion that no road improvements were necessary, they thought the project, they thought the building was still at Beeson and Shield, Beeson Road and Shields Road. Had it been up here, this wouldn't even be a discussion, it would have been in the loan that we got for the original project. So that's, that's the plan for it. DOT's plan, just briefly, is to widen Union Cross Road going south from the stoplight back to Field Crest. They will make a center turn lane, a right turn lane, and a, a left turn lane as well. So all of that will be done at once, and they hopefully will have that done by the time the building is complete. Be glad to answer any questions that, that you might have regarding those, those improvements.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
What is, as many times as I've driven it, I don't know the distance. What is the distance from Salisbury Street to 66 on Shields Road? Approximately?
Probably what, Dorn, mile and a quarter? Yeah, it's about a mile and a quarter. It's, I was trying to think, when I ran it, when I was at, it's about a mile and a quarter, yeah, somewhere in there.
Well, of course, if, if, if we decided to go ahead and take over, then our, our main objective is Ivy Redmond Park.
Correct.
But we'd be taking over the whole road.
Correct.
And would be responsible for the maintenance. Have y'all done any kind of analysis of?
We.
How much it would cost per year to maintain that road?
Maintenance per year is, you know, your per-year maintenance would be mainly involved with, with snow removal and things like that. Dorns went out, looked at the asphalt, we talked to DOT, and I think they said it's been paved 12 years ago, is that correct? So it's still, it's about halfway through its life cycle of, of paving. The three culverts at the bottom of the hill, that's our biggest concern, is the culverts there with the creek, and I've talked to Pat Ivy about those, and if we take it over, you know, would like for them to make sure that those culverts are, are okay and don't have any issues. He's indicated they would, would do that. So that's the, the two biggest ones, the culverts and, and the, the actual paving of the road. So we don't anticipate having to pave it, you know, it's a toss-up, just depending on the weather, but probably 10 to 12 years out before we'd have to resurface it. And then hopefully, the, the culverts, you know, Dorn and I have talked about it, if anything needs to be done, told them you can slip line those. So that would, would be an expense, but not that big of an expense, and if we can get DOT to do it now, if there's an issue, then we wouldn't have that expense. DOT, he gave me a timeline of, of when the pipes were installed and, and the last time they were inspected, but Pat said they would go out and take a look at those. If, if the town wants the road, they would go out and take a look at those and, and could work something out on the repairs. And as you know, they, they've been good about that in the past. We took over Beeson Road, that used to be a DOT road, and we took it over and DOT paved the road before we took it over. So there are some options there, things to look at, but that's the true maintenance, the yearly maintenance, I mean, if you get a pothole or this and that, and, but only maintenance during the year would be really if we had to plow it in the wintertime, which sometimes we help them out and do it anyway, so we're kind of going down there to the other ones.
Ivy Redmond Park, my hope is that Ivy Redmond Park will be a focal point of the whole triad, and I, the way things are going right now, I believe it's well on its way. What are the disadvantages of going ahead and taking over that road, and what are the advantages for doing it now?
I don't know that there's any true disadvantages unless there is an issue with the paving or the culverts, which again, we would check. You'd have a few more road miles to main, not a few more road miles, you'd have a few more thousands of feet to maintain, we would get pal bill money for that once we took the road over. So there's, and there's not really any huge advantages to it right now, except for, if we want to borrow the money, we can't borrow the money on that road unless we own the road. So that's, you know, that's the biggest advantage to doing it right now. Now, in the future, and again, I don't know, I can't give you a time of what the future is, but the biggest advantage. But the biggest advantage to having that road will be in that area right around Ivy Redmond Park. And it will, you know, especially if at some point the town looks at relocating Beeson Road over closer to Tredagar. You know, we can work it out. You would probably definitely want a signal there because you'd be closer into that curve. So things like that in the future would be the advantage to having it. If we wanted to look at some way to cross from the left side of the road over to the right side, you know, that didn't involve, you know, if we wanted a, a walkover or tunnel under, something like that in the future, we would have to also on the road. So there's, that's the advantage to having it in the future. Right now, the biggest advantage to having it would be to borrow the money to pay for the project. So we're going to look at that if the board approves this tonight and kind of see what our options are there and then come back and say, yes, we want to borrow the money and take over the road or whatnot. But, you know, right now, the biggest, our biggest push is to get the turn lanes there. To give you an example of, of how bad traffic can get on that road, and I don't know if I mentioned it last week, but the first year, the first two years that we had the state cross-country meet. You know, fortunately, we didn't have the building there at that point. Probably unfortunate, Ernie would tell you, but fortunately, we didn't have it there to worry about the traffic. But at that particular meet, the first year that we had it, and I can tell you on Friday, if you come down there about 5 o'clock, you'll see something fairly similar. We had traffic backed up from Beeson Road all the way up to, at one point, it was to the Wendy's on Highway 66. And just imagine, you know, if we'd had something else going on with folks coming in and coming out. That's why when we have the big meets, with the, one exception being this Friday, we close Shields Road so that we don't have that. But we're not going to have that luxury once the building is built because folks have to get on Shields Road to get in the building. So we need to be able to get those folks to turn into the building. Because if we're having an event, you know, if we have a big softball tournament, cross-country meet, soccer tournament, and then we've got folks trying to turn into that building without designated turn lanes, they're already backing up traffic. And then we're stacking, stacking extra traffic on top of it. And so at some point in time, you know, it, it becomes a mess. So that's our big concern is to get the improvement done. And then we'll kind of work on, do we take the road now or take the road later?
Well, just briefly, tell our board what we've got going on out there as far as cross-country in the next two months. Because it's unbelievable.
Yeah, the, the big one is, the biggest one now that is, is bigger than the, the state meet is, is Friday night. He told me the, he told me yesterday, you know, the guy organizing the meet, it's organized by the coach at Mount Taber. He doesn't give you all the information you need all the time. But he told me yesterday, he's got 500 more kids signed up as of yesterday than he had last year. So he's up to right at 3,800, 3,700 kids with about 7,000 spectators. I'm not sure exactly where we're going to park all 7,000 spectators, but we'll get them in there. So that starts at, and then in October is really when it, I mean, it stays busy through October, but in October, we've got a, a state meet for the homeschool state meet, like during the middle of the week. And then on the 26th, I think, we got the Southern Conference Championships, which is UNCG and all those folks. The day after that, we've got another state meet, a regional meet. Three days after that, we've got another state meet. And then two days after that, when we've got the final state meet. We are looking at, Ernie and I are looking at the Junior College National Championships for 2025. So that's a couple of years out. But prior this year, prior to the, the two weeks of state meets, there's one week. We're on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We've got two meets each day. And that's really where you run into your traffic is when you've got one conference meet coming in, one conference meet going out. That's what we had Thursday. We had, we had a big meet that was supposed to be 10 teams. It turned into 40 teams. We had two middle school soccer games going on. Then we had a high school soccer game as well going on at the same time. And I think three of them wanted to leave at the same time. So it was a little hectic getting out for about an hour. And I think they had softball practice in there as well. So when you've got everything going on in the park, and Ernie's group does a great job with, with keeping it all going. I mean, it's a lot of folks in and out of there. And then you add cross-country to it. They just add a lot of traffic to it because they're at the top of the road. So when they come out, they're immediately out there. And then if they park on the other side of the road, you've got them coming, coming out, going both ways. So there would be, it would be an absolute nightmare to have something on the corner. And, and Ernie's, he's going to have something there, I can tell you. He's, he's already planning going to, going to trade shows to get folks there. If he has a, a large volleyball tournament or a large basketball tournament on that corner the same weekend when you've got everything going on in the park, without turn lanes, you got a problem. I mean, we can get through it, but the guy behind me here is going to have a lot of folks out there directing traffic.
Well, to me, and with your expert design, you've made Ivy Redmond Park the, the cross-country capital of North Carolina as far as colleges, junior colleges, and high schools. And I commend you for that. But all of this traffic's happening, and we don't even have the building built yet. So it's just going to keep growing. It looks like to me, we ought to seriously consider taking over their road so we can go ahead and plan ahead. With stoplights, turn lanes, moving Beeson Road over, backing it up to Tredagar. And I know y'all have done a lot of research, but I think the research ought to continue. We need to, we need to see how quickly we can get that done, if it's feasible. Joe, it strikes me that that's a fantastic problem to have. Fantastic problem to have.
Well, it is, Bill, and that's what I've always said about traffic in the town of Kernersville. People, you know, you hear every once in a while, people saying, complaining about the traffic in Kernersville. Well, if you don't have traffic, you don't have an economy. I mean, so we're thriving. And for a small town, almost a city now, we ought to be proud that we've got a, got that problem to deal with and worry about. We just need to plan.
If I could, and Joe, I'm with you 100% on that. The only question I got is what, what if we had to fix them culverts at the bottom of the hill?
We, Dorn and I have discussed that. Fortunately, we think right now there's only one out of the three that might need repairing. There's a method you can use, slip lining. Dorn knows a whole lot more about it than I do, basically going and put a liner in the pipe. Isn't that correct?
Same thing they did to the sewer system.
Yeah, you can, you can line it. That's a lot cheaper. And it, and it lasts a, a good while. And it is, it's very similar to, to what they did to the sewer pipes. So that would be, after having looked at them, we think if any of them develop an issue, you could do that method. And it would be cheaper than going in, obviously, and, you know, digging a culvert out, putting the culvert in. Don't really want to go that way if you don't have to because then you have to close the road and detour traffic and all of that. So they're, they are in pretty good shape. Two of the, I think there's three. Is that correct? And two of them look like they're in pretty good shape. A third one, DOT says it's in good shape. From what we could tell, it might need a little work, but we're not 100% sure on that. And I will say that, you know, even if we take over the road, it would likely be after the work is done. So that way, we could, we think that would be the best way to do it, to work out a financing agreement. But we'll, we'll see.
Thank you.
Okay, for tonight, we have a action requested to approve the
Just approve the road lining project on Shields Road.
I'm looking at the notice of intent to reimburse, but that's a separate item.
Correct.
All right, so you don't have a proposed motion, but you'd like us to?
I would make a motion, if the board so chooses, I'll make a motion to approve the road lining on project, road lining project on Shields Road that is associated with the construction of the new Rec, Parson Recreation Event Center.
Okay, with a maximum 900,000 or?
You can do that.
Does it intend to reimburse?
The intent to reimburse is always more than the actual cost. And again, that was, that was an estimate by DOT is 818. You can prove it, approve it not to exceed 900. If it does, I'll bring it back.
Okay. We have a proposed motion. Do, would someone like to make the motion to approve that road improvement? Okay, motion by J.R. Gorham, second.
Second.
Second by Joe Pennix. All in favor? It's unanimous. How soon can they start? When are they doing the Union Cross project?
I think they're looking at starting yet. They will start some preliminary work on it this fall. I don't know if they'll start the actual construction until the spring.
Okay, recent experiences, the longer something takes, the more expensive it gets, so?
I agree. So the good thing is DOT is doing the project themselves with, from what I understand, with their own workforce. So it should hold in line. That is what would increase. Labor wouldn't go up, but it's what might increase, as you've seen through the years, would be cost of materials. But I will let Pat Ivy know tomorrow that the board has approved it for DOT to do that. And then if there's some agreement, they need to get back to us. I'll get it back to you and have it on the agenda just soon as they get it to us.
All right, we are to the town manager's report. So we've got item 3A.
3A, Madam Mayor and Board, is property located at 109 South Cherry Street. Most of you know that as the Morris House. That is property the town purchased some years ago with the plan of at some point in time, making that part of the museum. As you all know, there is a, an amount approved in the budget for this year to do renovations to the Bellamy House, which is a current museum. We think we can probably take the Morris House, make that the museum, make the Bellamy House like a period display house. Do both of those projects for what's in the budget for the one. It's a long shot. We think we can. We don't know. But we know to start with on the Morris House, we've got to kind of tear everything out of it. The plan would be to go in and make it a wide-open space so that it's more user-friendly as a museum, really, for lack of a better word. The Bellamy House is kind of chopped up into rooms. We propose taking the Morris House, opening it wide open, and then using partitions, just separate it off for exhibits. We have gotten two quotes to do that work, which is initially taking the plaster off the walls, the ceilings, getting all the walls out of the Morris House, and then we'll see where we are on that. The two quotes came back really close. It's probably the closest I've ever seen two quotes. One of them was $21,900, the other one was $22,000. We're recommending the 21,900. It is a local contractor here in Kernersville. It's Phelps Construction, right there on Harmon Lane. Once we get that done, then we will go back. We'll have someone come in and tell us what it's going to cost to really get it into shape to use it. We're, we're thinking that you'll probably have to do some, some sheet rock on the walls, do some electrical upgrades, obviously, heating and air, minor plumbing upgrades because it's, you know, for that, you just need, you can have, you know, the bare minimum bathroom to meet code. We'll see where it's at. We'll bring that back to the board and then make a decision on which way to move forward with the museum. So if the board so chooses, have someone to make a motion for the quote of 21,900 to go in and do that demolition work at the Morris House at 109 South Cherry Street.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Alderman Thompson, second. By Alderman Barrow. All those in favor? It's unanimous. He's done nice work throughout town and he's very local.
Yep. Glad that, that we have someone local that has been on this part of it and move forward to, to move him forward with, with that.
Probably walk to the construction site.
He could. Yep. Item B, Madam Mayor and Board, is a consideration of purchase of real property located at 647 Beeson Road. This is the piece of property immediately adjacent to or touching the property the board just voted several months ago to buy at 689 Beeson Road. This property is a house with about one acre of land. I think it's just a little bit shy of an acre. It's .96, I think. The owner got the property appraised. The town got the property appraised. Our appraisal was 210. The property owner's was 240, much like the appraisals that we got on the property next door. I have talked to the property owner of the board and gave me permission to go up to 10% over the town's appraisal value. Worked with him a little while trying to, he was at 250. So we can't do that. That's more than both appraisals. He came in at 240. He wanted to stay at 240. We were at 225. Basically, I said, I'll split the difference with you. Go to 225. After a day or so, that didn't work, so I went down and, and chatted with him a little while. Got him to 231. He said he would take that. He needs until the end of October to get all of his stuff out of there, which that's fine with, with Ernie and fine with me. We don't have any immediate need for the house there. It will give us another piece of property along Beeson Road. As I've told the board before, you know, the property there on Beeson Road, there are several parcels there. We don't really have a plan for what we're going to do with those yet. This one would be if we moved Beeson Road, it would go through this property and the property behind this, which we do not own. And then come through the property that we just purchased. The biggest thing is, you know, we've discussed traffic on Shields Road, traffic on Beeson Road. It's what we don't want in the future is a subdivision to be built with 15 or 20 or 25 homes. All of those homes use Beeson Road to get in and out. That would not be a good scenario for anyone. The folks living there, or you all on the board, you would get several complaints from folks calling about the traffic. Because if, you know, if I lived there and I had to wait an hour to get out on the Shields Road every Saturday, I would probably not appreciate it. So, you know, for future planning of the park, it's better if the town owns most of that property there. There are still some parcels there that we, that we have not purchased. Couple of larger parcels, but this gentleman came to us after we bought the house next door. He is interested in selling. Our recommendation to the board is to purchase a property there at 647 Beeson Road for the value of $231,000. Then we will move forward. He needs to close by, he's going out of the country by the end of this month. I told him that should not be a problem. So we will close on it pretty soon.
Hey, are there any comments or do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we purchased the property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Alderman Pennix, second by Alderman Gorham. All in favor? It's unanimous. All right, moving on to item D.
Item C and D.
Item C, the reverse end.
Yeah, C and D, I'll cover them both. They're both the same thing. If we choose to go back and borrow money for these purchases, once we pay for these, we have, we're required by law to have a notice of intent to reimburse. So item C is the intent to reimburse for the real property that you all just approved the purchase of. And item D is a notice of intent to reimburse for the improvements on Shields Road. If we choose not to reimburse ourselves, there's no harm in having passed the intent to reimburse. It's not requiring us to do it. It's just saying that if we choose to do it, we've, we've taken that step and we're okay.
Okay, the first one would be item C, which is the notice of intent to reimburse for 647 Beeson Road. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, Madam Mayor.
So moved.
I think I've had about four people respond. So I've got Alderman Gorham making the motion, Alderman Thompson seconding, all those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, the second is item D, which is the notice of intent to reimburse for Shields Road. And that would be the road improvements, the turn lanes that we just discussed. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I've got a motion by Alderman Pennix, I have a second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right, matters to be presented by the town attorney. Oh, wait a minute, Mr. Swisher, did you have anything else that's listed?
The only, the only thing I have, Madam Mayor, is you have at your desk a budget actual report year-to-date. That's for the general fund balances. Go over that, if you have any questions, be glad to answer them. As I said earlier, Friday night, if you're not doing anything from 6 o'clock to 10 o'clock, come on down to the cross-country meet. As long as it's not thundering and lightning, we will be running. So it might be a little wet, but supposedly, that adds to the fun of it, I guess. Not sure, I've not been there in a rain at night, so I guess I'll find out.
Just a note, as to your, your, your very good description of the, the popularity of that park and the demand for people using it, there has been interest indicated by residents of the area that some of the neighborhoods that back up to the park, there would be, it would be nice to have some more pedestrian access to the park, not from just the main entrances. Long-term, that might be helpful for people getting to soccer games and softball games and that sort of thing, or, or going to walk or run, or walk their dog, play with their dog at the dog park.
Yes, and Ernie, Ernie and I have talked about that, is, you know, as we developed the plan for the whole park, we will certainly look at those accesses. It's pretty easy from the Tredagar side, it's a little tougher from the side where you have to cross the creek and come up. But as we do some stream restorations and some other things, we will certainly look at those, because that just, you know, everybody that can come by foot, that takes one car off the road.
Well, and I think that this new greenway section we opened is going to be very popular and create a lot of interest in kind of the what's next. That would be a quick way to get people over to an existing place to walk if we could have some local access.
Yep, yep, and we will, we'll look at that in the, the planning that we're doing now for the park.
Okay. All right, Mr. Powell, do you have anything to present tonight?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any matters to present.
All right, then matters to be presented by the mayor and board of Alderman. Mr. Pennix, would you like to begin?
I have nothing.
Okay, Mr. Gorham?
No comments.
Mr. Bear, wait, sorry, Mr. Apple.
How quickly we forget. No, I, I do not have any comments, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bear?
I don't have any.
Mr. Thompson?
No ma'am, thank you.
Okay. So there's no closed session or anything like that tonight? All right, well, if there's no further business before the board this evening, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion by Alderman Thompson, second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor? This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for joining us.